I'd like to call this meeting to order. Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Carrati.
Ms. Rocomando.
Present.
Ms. Borelli.
Present.
Mr. Aricello. Ms. Iannello.
Present.
Mr. Laurentino.
Present.
Ms. Roloff.
Here.
Ms. Torbic.
Present.
Ms. Traverso.
Here.
Ms. Odeorelli.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Adequate notice of this meeting has been sent to all members of the Board of Education and to the Bergen Record in accordance with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 231, 1975. At this time, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices are to be turned off. Okay. We're going to start off this evening with the student representative report.
Wait, is it on?
No.
It's on.
Yeah, it's on.
It's on.
You just need to talk louder.
Good? Yep. Okay, sorry, good evening, everyone. We're going to start off tonight with Washington School. In November, Washington had its annual Thanksgiving feast, and it was a huge success, and they had many parent volunteers come help to facilitate. The PTO had been very active over the last year, and Washington School is very grateful for them in all they do. Washington School teachers continue to use the creative curriculum to teach different units of study. In November, two of those studies were trees and balls. The teachers used many different methods to bring these lessons to life, including building life-size trees in their classrooms and playing all different kinds of games with balls. Learning through movement and play is one of their favorite things to do. The children learn hand-eye coordination, balance, catching and throwing, turn-taking, rules of games, and so much more. In December, they look forward to parent-teacher conferences, a holiday shop where the students can shop for holiday gifts for their families, their holiday concert, which the teachers are working diligently to coordinate, as well as their cookies with Olaf event, where the students from the middle school-high school sale program will bake cookies and come read with them. As always, lots of exciting things are happening at the preschool.
And for Long School, recently, Long School has celebrated gratitude. They held SEL lessons, which highlighted self-awareness and the power of gratitude. Students then expressed gratitude through recognizing their strengths, achievements, and the contributions of others. From heartfelt messages to a collaborative gratitude quilt, students in all grade levels participated in meaningful activities and presented in assemblies with their work displayed throughout the building. In December, they enjoyed their annual holiday gift shop, giving special thanks to their dedicated PTO for their assistance. This week, parents are invited in for parent-teacher conferences, which is a great way for their teachers to collaborate and build on partnerships with their families. As Long School looks forward to their Winter Spirit Week, the week of December 16th, they wish the Board of Education and the entire Saddlebrook community a joyous holiday season.
Smith School had the second annual Balloons Over Broadway event the day before Thanksgiving. This is a great new tradition, which incorporates many subjects, all grade levels, and a ton of teamwork. The students are quite creative. December has been busy with trimester one ending, parent-teacher conferences this week, and the PTO running the holiday store. Smith students are excited for the themed days next week as 2024 wraps up. And lastly, Smith wishes everyone a happy and healthy new year.
Towards the end of last month, Franklin School's Student Council organized a Thanksgiving food collection. The council was able to collect a total of 296 items. This month, Franklin School opened a brand-new sensory room, the Falcon's Nest, which is designed to promote a positive school culture and climate in supporting students' health and well-being. This space provides a safe environment where students can be supported to comment regularly, therefore optimizing learning and participation in the school environment. They also honor their Falcons of the Month. This award is presented to students who demonstrate the school vision, traits of responsibility, kindness, integrity, and respect, and have achieved academic success or growth. 297 items.
As for the high school, later this week, the high school will be holding instant decision days with William Patterson and Fairleigh Dickinson University. Good luck to the students who are participating. The day before Thanksgiving break, high school students participated in an SEL day. Students were able to choose their activities so they would have a calm and exciting day. Students were able to be placed with their friends while they participated in an array of unique and fun activities. High school parents were able to participate in a FAFSA informational session held in the Media Center this month. The turnout was great, with dozens of parents participating to learn more about FAFSA. If you were unable to make the meeting, the presentation is located on the high school website. Throughout the months of December and January, sophomores are participating in teen mental health training. Sessions take place during the students' gym periods. The high school would like to extend a big congratulations to the juniors and seniors who inducted into the National Honor Society on December 3rd. Congratulations on this big achievement.
For the middle school, the React Club partnered with Bergen County Animal Shelter to provide items on their wish list. The club collected and delivered toys, treats, pet food, and blankets for the animals at the shelter. Parent partnership was a great night. The middle school hosted a session, Middle School Survival. Thank you to Ms. Coffee, Mr. Box, Ms. Arnold, and Ms. Frost for an informative workshop for the middle school parents. The middle school SEL Wellness Day, there was an assembly called Limitless You by Lisa. She talks about having confidence in yourself and believing in yourself. And on half of the middle school, they wish everyone happy holidays.
And lastly, all of our information regarding sports. We're going to start off with the volleyball honors. First-team All-League First Team Volleyball Player Gabriella Bruce, second-team Marion Cooperus and Stella Cahill Solik, with an honorable mention to Deanna Joz. A huge shout-out to Stella Cahill Solik on reaching 500 career assists, and Marion Cooperus on reaching 100 kills. And lastly, congratulations to Coach Sandra Myers. This season, Coach reached her 100th victory mark. First-team All-League Football Players Kyle Vukovich, Jaden Gatis, Nicholas Vidiallo, and Dylan Cerciello. Second team was Lucas Lamonti, TJ Phelan, Giancarlo Gross, and Anthony Way, and an honorable mention to Colin Taylor and Dimitri Clark. Lastly, congratulations to Nina Barelli and Clara Sadi for being selected to play in the NJIC Senior Girls Soccer Showcase, and Damian Taraska on being selected to the Boys Soccer County All-Star Game. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for that report. Tonight, we're going to actually go to the Business Administrator's Report before the Superintendent's Report.
Okay, thank you, just a few items. This past Monday, the district's annual financial audit began, and I expect them to be reviewing the records over the next two weeks. The 25-26 budget is underway and being built right now. The administrators will be spending their budgets later this month. The district has several products with the state where we budgeted for 60%. The state will pay 40%. That involved replacing nine boilers. We have at least one in each building, and those bids are on tonight's agenda. HVAC upgrades at Franklin and Smith will be the next project that we will be working on. As for the referendum projects, the main athletic field work started on November 11th, and the contractor has made great progress, and the field is almost ready for the actual artificial field turf. They'll work on the light poles and bleachers next. Pending any winter weather delays, the turf should be installed by March. The partial window replacement here at the high school is projected to begin soon, probably later this month. The coolage renovations are progressing well, and the general work should be completed in about a month or so, at which the elevator is a little later in March. So our move is projected to be, you know, later in the school year or over the summer. The Washington elevator, those renovations upstairs, the second floor, that's pretty much all completed. The last few items is having the final inspections on the elevator, and we hope to have that shortly and up and running. Washington School's ceiling lighting and the window replacement projects are currently out for bid, and I'll be opening those bids on December 20th. So everything with the referendum is progressing well, and most of the projects should be done by this summer. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, for the Superintendent's Report, Mrs. Violetti.
Thank you. I will give my report, and then I have a short presentation. I just want to share something quickly, and then we'll move right into the exemplary Falcons. So I see some families are here this evening, and we'll take a short break and then come right back. Okay, so the high school, not the high school. Helen I. Smith School Environmental Club, they received a recycling grant from a county organization, or from the state, or I think from the New Jersey Department of Education. So they received, I believe it was $1,000, to put towards recycling at Smith School. So they've been working on that. I also want to share that at the first, at the beginning of December, on December 2nd, I ran a report within our Genesis system on excessive absences. And if you are absent two times per month, then you're on track to be labeled as chronic, as being chronically absent. So if you had seven or more absences come December, you're on track to be labeled chronically absent. So I ran a report for all those students that were absent seven or more times since September, and I sent out 90-something letters to our families to inform them that their child was on track to be labeled chronically absent. With that, some members of the leadership team had contacted NJ4S. NJ4S is a nonprofit organization, and they work with school districts on various topics, and one of them is absenteeism. I also want to share that per our policy, five tardies turns into one absence. So in our K-8 buildings, if you're late five times, that is equivalent, it turns into being absent one full day. At the high school, if you're late to class five times, it turns into being absent one time for that class. So that is part of our policy and regulation. NJ4S, they started already, it's one time per week. Hold on, it's one of these tabs. I'm not finding the right one. There it is. They meet during lunchtime. There's 10 students right now that are currently participating. They provide lunch for the students, and they have a curriculum that they work with the students on, helping to improve their attendance in school. The program also includes a parent engagement piece to ensure that families are equipped with the tools and strategies to support their child's success. So we're really, we aren't a cap for absenteeism, for chronic absenteeism, and that's why we're working so hard on this effort, on this initiative within our district. We need our students to be able to be present in school in order to learn. So I will continue monitoring our chronic absenteeism, those who are on target, and will continue to be sending out letters. I also want to share that our Seal of Biliteracy, that's the program where our high school students are able to take a test to see if they're proficient in a different language, and then on their diploma, there is a Seal of Biliteracy. I'm proud to say we have 37 students this year. Last year, we only had 11, so we have 37 students that have chosen to participate in the Seal of Biliteracy. Last year, all 11 did achieve this goal. Okay, I'm going to, I have a quick presentation. If I can ask the board to just move, question?
I have a question on the absenteeism. It's K through 8 as well, the same consequences as a high schooler?
Meaning?
If they're late, I think you said four times.
Five tardies?
Five tardies?
Yes, it's equivalent to one absence.
So a first grader whose parent can't get them to school for whatever reason is going to be penalized?
So we actually started something this year in our K-6 schools, where the parents are required to actually sign their child in, into school if they are late, and it has reduced our rate of tardies.
Okay.
Okay, so if we can transition.
Oh, we can't sit there.
Oh, that's reserved for the middle school concert, are you guys?
When is that?
I don't know.
Thursday, next Thursday, maybe? Is it this? Is it tomorrow? Thank you. She made that. Thank you for your patience. Okay. Thanks, Niles. Thank you. All right, so what I wanted to share this evening was with our title funds that we received this school year, we were able to create these sensory rooms at Smith School and Franklin School. So I just wanted to quickly share what we were able to do in these buildings. So I'm starting out with Franklin School. This is a picture of their Falcon's Nest. It is located in the Media Center. They cornered off a part of it, and it's designed to help students to relax, regulate their emotions, those struggling with dysregulation. These are the items that's included in their Falcon Nest. So we have a tactile wall, a beanbag chair, a large orb chair that's equipped with Bluetooth. You'll see a picture of it later as well, but that's half of it right there. And you sit, and it kind of just, you zone, it kind of blocks everything out, and you connect it to Bluetooth, and you can listen to music. There's light and sound effects on the wall, a rocker seat, lighted bubble tube, and effects projector, sensory floor tiles, and more. Those are the sensory floor tiles right there that you can step on. And then you see those bubble tubes that are over there. That's the orb chair, the tactile wall. You can see the comfy, all the sensory-related items. And it's interactive. You see, you can press those buttons and change the colors, change how the bubbles move throughout the tubes. And, you know, time spent in a sensory room can increase focus and alertness, improve social skills, and enhance productivity. So we have many students that sometimes they just need a quick break, so they're able to go to this room, have five minutes, go back up to their class, and they are focused and ready to learn, and available to learn. So we're ready, we just finished them maybe a week ago, so that's why I just wanted to share, it was very last minute, I wanted to share tonight, because we're really excited, and we're already seeing students, this having such a positive effect on our students. This is Washington School, the playroom at Washington School. Our board members, you may recall during budget season that you approved a Funtronic floor for Washington School. That is what it looks like. It is currently installed, and it's very interactive. So I went over to play with it. It has like the big piano, has soccer, race cars, educational games, you can count, chase the letters, things like that. There's a whole bunch of, you can pretend you're a fish in the water. It makes all the water sounds. There's a whole bunch of items, interactive items for our students. So that room is not finished yet. You could see it's carpeted. It's navy blue with the gold block around it, around the perimeter. And we, there's like a little roller coaster, there's some soft cushiony chairs, a bunch of items for our students, again, to go take a break if they struggle in a big, open area such as the gymnasium, and they prefer something a little bit more warm for them, this is where they're able to go to. Yes? This is, Washington School is our preschool building. It's right on Market Street. And Washington School, we just renovated the upstairs with the referendum, so there's four new classrooms upstairs. So we have more students this year than we ever have. And then Smith School, they renovated a small office area to be their Falcon's Nest. And they have, this is everything that they have. They actually put in a whole stereo system. You can read for yourself some of the other items, and I know that there's some videos here. Let me see if this one's a video. No, that one's not a video. What is sensory magic? So this is what their vision was for their sensory room. Possibilities are endless. Children who have difficulty processing sensory information effectively often have trouble completing school and home-based tasks that require them to sit still, attend to instruction, and be able to engage socially with peers, and play and work cooperatively with others. So you can see, again, those are interactive, where you push those buttons to make different things happen. Time spent in a sensory room can increase focus, and let's share a short video. So you can see how it's just, it changes colors, it's interactive. Our young students are very wowed by that. There's also a foyer area that's right outside, that's leading into the sensory room, and you can see there's just some tactile things on the wall for them to interact with. And then this is a faux-on tour when you walk into their sensory room at Smith School. So those are interactive. You can hit into those, and they make drum noises. That's the chair, the orb chair. You'll see some comfy seating, the interactive projector, and with that projector, the possibilities are really endless, so you can create different scenarios, and then the lighting in the tubes will match that scenario. So if it's a winter scene, the lighting in the tubes is going to be white. If you change it to a fall scene, it's going to be orange. And then there's different activities that you're able to do, like it'll simulate being in an airplane. It'll simulate being in different situations, so that way our students who may struggle with certain situations are able to participate and practice. That is, I just wanted a quick review of what we're doing in our schools and what we were able to accomplish so far. Questions? Okay. All right, so what, something that we started doing this school year was trying to honor our high school students in a way that they deserve. So we invited our, some of our exemplary Falcons to our board meetings this year. So what we do is, we send out a nomination to all of our high school teachers. They nominate students who they feel deserve this award, and then we send it out to the teachers across the district. So anyone that has had these students in the past are able to share something about the student. So I'm just going to read what was shared. We'll have a shirt for you, a Falcon of the Week shirt. We'll take a picture and go from there. So we have three students, Antonia's not here, right? Antonia did not make it? Okay, we'll honor her next month. All right, our first student is Jana. Jana always goes above and beyond in art class. She listens attentively, follows directions exceptionally, and always puts immense effort into her artwork and written assignments. She doesn't hesitate to ask questions, and when the period is beginning and ending, she always sits. She's very friendly and respectful to her classmates and instructors, and also attends extracurricular activities such as the outdoors club. On top of everything else, English is her second language, and she never lets a language barrier hold her back. Jana is an amazing student. While she is new to the district this year, she has already jumped right in as far as making friends and getting involved. She is so hardworking, always asking questions to help her understanding, especially since English isn't her first language. When she gets her grade back on a test or assignment, she always looks over the material to see what she got wrong and how she can improve in the future. She gets along well with her classmates and shows potential to be a great leader as her high school years go on. Jana is an excellent student. Her work on every assignment goes above and beyond expectations. If she has a question about an assignment or a concept, she is the first to ask for help. Her insight into the texts we read in class allows her peers a chance to hear different perspectives that most would not consider. In addition to her high achievements academically, she's also kind and considerate to her peers. It is a privilege to teach Jana. She adds true value to any class she is in. I had a blast taking Jana on a hike in Haverstraw. The joy on her face made my day. She visits me often to continue working on her paintings. She's always polite and very positive. Jana is a wonderful student and person. She is always very kind to both students and staff, and enjoys coming in during extra help hours to chat and create art for fun. She is a passionate student and has a thirst for knowledge. Congratulations, Jana. Here you go, come on up. And I know I haven't. Congratulations. Thank you. Give a picture, hold on. All right, you can smile. Perfect, thank you. All right, Charles Henkel III. Charles is a respectful young man in the classroom. No, let me restart that. Charles is a respectful young man. In the classroom, Charles participates well, and other students are eager to hear his input. Not only is he well-liked by his peers, he is a role model to others. He works hard and has natural leadership qualities. Charles leads by example. He participates in school activities and is an active member in the community. Charles is a wonderful young man. He is a role model to many, and because of his involvement in the Scouts, he is a born leader. Charles does a lot of projects to benefit the community, and being a member, it is deeply appreciated. Charles is always willing to lend a helping hand. Charles is very creative, and the work he produces is original and genuine. He's a thoughtful person and deeply respectful and polite. He is a pleasure to teach. Charles, all in caps, with three exclamation points, as I called him in school and still do when I see him at the high school, is very respectful, polite, and a great role model. He was always ready to help out his fellow students and still does to this day. Charles is a dedicated student and always plays for my concerts after so many years. Way to go, Charles. In Mr. Iannakun's class at Long Memorial School, Charles showed early on that he is an exceptional student. He always worked hard academically, but his kind heart is his biggest strength. I am so proud of him. Charles is a well-rounded student. His dedication and versatility make him a standout in both academics and athletics. As a valued member of the wrestling team, Charles demonstrates discipline, perseverance, and teamwork. In the classroom, he excels in STEM subjects, showcasing a natural aptitude for problem-solving and innovation. His polite demeanor and willingness to help others shine, especially in his computer science class, where he often assists peers with challenging concepts. Charles exemplifies the balance of hard work, kindness, and intellectual curiosity, making him a role model for his fellow students. Congratulations, Charles. Alexis Relia. Yay, Rel. Rel yay. Alexis Relia. Alexis moved to Saddlebrook her ninth-grade year. Switching to a new high school is never easy, but Alexis came in and jumped right in with enthusiasm. In the four years she's been here, Alexis has joined many clubs and even was the founder of the Culinary Club. Alexa puts her best foot forward in everything she does. She advocates for herself with confidence and respect. She is friendly and kind to everyone she meets and is willing to pitch in and do the work that needs to get done. Alexis is a natural leader and does so with ease. I know without a doubt that whatever college she chooses to attend, she will be successful. Not only is Alexis hardworking, respectful, and a leader, she's also very funny. She can make anyone smile with her fun personality. Alexis is the president of the FBLA chapter here at Saddlebrook High School. She takes on this leadership role with pride and commitment. She will be one of the students representing our chapter at the Northern Region Summit taking place at FDU next month. I know she will go on to do great things after high school. Alexis has a great sense of humor and disposition. Her presence always exudes a lightness that is great fun to work with. She is incredibly dedicated, driven, and industrious. I am excited to hear what she will be up to in the next few years. Alexis is a fantastic president of the Culinary Club. She helped to write the application for the Rachel Ray Grant that our school was awarded to be able to have the club. Her attention to detail when creating a shopping list for the ingredients needed for our recipe, her professional communication through emails and in person, and her ability to guide other students to cook the food during our club meetings are prime examples of why she is an exemplary Falcon. Alexis also serves as co-president for Falcons for Change, the school's activism club. This year, Alexis has increased membership and has already spearheaded projects such as voting process education, a project on... Ethics. A food drive for food insecurity, Career Day and Diversity Day, and Diversity Day. Every time, every time I suggest something such as, I shouldn't escape the lesson. Every time I suggest something such as making slides, making an agenda, survey the students for data, et cetera, Alexis has already thought of it and executed it. Last year, when the club was invited to Ramapo College for a think-tank event with college and high school students from all over New Jersey, Alexis represented our school like a seasoned professional. Congratulations, Alexis. Congratulations, Alexis. All right, at this time, can I have a motion to take a short break? Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. And we're gonna take a five-minute break, no? Okay. And then we'll reconvene. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to reconvene the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All approved. Okay. All right, so... All right, so, um, can I have a motion now to open the meeting for public comment for agenda items and policies?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, would anybody like to speak? All right, can I have a motion to close the meeting to the public?
Motion. Second.
Okay. All right. Um, we are going to move on to board action items. Any discussion?
Comments?
No. 25.21? Okay. Are we good? Okay. All right, roll call, please. I'm sorry. Can I have a second motion?
Second.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Torbic?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Akamondo?
Uh, yes to all, but on B2425.20, one and two, I wasn't here.
Ms. Borelli?
I would say the same thing for me on that, because I was not here either for B2425.20.
So you want one and two as well, or all of them?
I wasn't here on one and two, yes. I'm here for today, but it was already discussed, so I wasn't part of that, no?
This is last month.
Last month?
November.
This is November.
Oh, okay. Then I was here, yes. Yes, you all!
All right.
Yes, yes!
Corrected. Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Ainello?
Yes.
Been a long day.
Okay. Uh, education curriculum?
Sorry. At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. E2425.35 through E2425.37. Any questions?
Wait, can I have a second?
Second.
Does anybody have a question now?
For field trips, you'll see the sixth-grade field trip, their annual field trip to Fairview YMCA is on there. The high school ski club trips to Mountain Creek. Some of our special education classes, community outings in Life Town. FBLA will be attending the Northern Region Summit that was shared about with Alexis. They'll meet with business leaders in North Jersey area, connect with other FBLA members within the region. DECA will be participating in a competition at Ramapo College. And preschool classes will be visiting Imagine That.
Any discussion? We're good?
I'll let it go.
Okay. You'll let me know?
I'll let it go.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Torbic?
Yes, to all except, uh, the field trips. E2425.35, numbers 95. And 106 through 110. Yes, 106 through 110.
Okay. Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Akamondo?
Yes.
Ms. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Uh, good, well, yes to all, but under E2425.35 abstain from number 86.
Ms. Ainello?
Yes.
Okay, uh...
Just before you do the budget, just before you take motion on the budget, I did email the board members on, on 2425.43. I'm just, the treasurer's report's gonna change for that one account. All the other numbers remain the same.
That was email that you sent out?
Yes.
Today. Okay. Okay, uh, Mr. Akamondo?
Okay. At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. BF2425.41 to BF2425.52.
Second. Any discussion? Questions? All right. Roll call?
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Torbic?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Akamondo?
Uh, yes, but on BF2425.41, I would abstain from check number 66280.
Okay, Ms. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Good, well, yes to all, abstain in BF2425.41. Check numbers 6302 and 6657.
And Ms. Ainello?
Uh, yes, to most. But I'm gonna abstain in BF2425.41. Check numbers 6223, 6581, and then 66339. And then in BF2425.44, I'm gonna abstain from item number 74. And yes to everything else.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, Ms. Torbic?
There we go. Okay. At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. F2425.5.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? On the report? Let's do roll call?
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Torbic?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Akamondo?
Yes.
Ms. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Ainello?
Yes.
Okay. Policy, Ms. Roloff?
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. POL2425.3. One and two.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion about policies?
Number one, as shared on Monday, just some minor revisions. Making the high school petty cash account what it is today and deleting the community school petty cash account. It is no longer a part of us. And for the second one, that's the UMed aircraft system. So that was, that's our drones. And the current policy states that we cannot fly drones over the athletic fields during athletics, during sports. So that is a popular activity right now. You get a bird's eye view. You can see more of the field. So this revision will allow drone use with the, um... Approval of the superintendent. Thank you.
Approval.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Roloff? Ms. Torbic?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Akamondo?
Yes.
Ms. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Ainello?
Yes.
Okay, negotiations, Ms. Adorelli?
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following item. N2425.3.
Second. Any questions or discussions? Let's do roll call?
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Torbic?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Ms. Akamondo?
Yes.
Ms. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Ainello?
Yes.
Okay. Personnel, Mr. Laurentino?
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. P2425.37 through P2525.43.
Second.
4.37, uh, one of our occupational therapists, Laura Stern. She submitted her retirement. It's going to be effective March 1st. 4.39, we are appointing a middle school science teacher, a lunch aid at Franklin School, our district technology specialist, and that reminds me that tonight is Nile's last board meeting with us. A leave-of-absence occupational therapist from one of our OTs is going out on maternity leave. And number six is a new and power professional that I interviewed yesterday. And it would be a power professional in our middle school. He currently works for ESS and he's going to transition to be one of our members. Point 41 is a... Point 41 and point 42 are both Saddlebrook residents that are requested to do their clinical practice hours, observation hours with us. So they are being appointed. And then point 43 is this musical staff. And I did look into it and I was wrong. They are all fingerprinted. Definitely numbers 1 through 4. The set construction, I need to confirm more on that. But the others have been fingerprinted since 2017, so I took a look through their files.
Thank you.
Isn't number 5 somehow related to our school?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. So we don't, I think, need to be concerned about that person. Any questions or discussion? All right, roll call?
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Torbic?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Akamondo?
Yes.
Ms. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Uh, go yes to all, but I'll abstain P2425.41.
And Ms. Ainello?
Yes.
All right, we're gonna move on to committee reports. Do we have one for Budget and Finance, Mr. Akamondo?
Uh, no, we don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Facilities and operations?
Uh, not at this time. We pushed it back.
Okay. All right. Negotiations, no?
Hopefully not for a long time.
Hopefully not for a long time.
Okay. And policy, Ms. Roloff? Do we have anything? No? Okay. All right, so we're gonna move on to liaison reports.
Nothing from BCS.
Nothing? Okay. Um, Education Foundation?
Yes.
Ms. Torbic, go ahead.
If you can. Okay, so, um, I... The students that won the Saddlebrook Education Foundation Walkathon are Tristan Young, Liam McMahan, Joseph... Osa Cornell? Did I say that right? Oh, okay. Nicholas Logerfro. And... Damian Taraska. Sorry. Apologize for the craziness of the names. That's it. I just wanted to let you know who won.
Oh, that was nice. Okay. Specialized Parent Advisory Group?
Nothing.
Nothing?
No.
For township, we do not have any reports as of right now. So we're gonna move on to...
I did, I did email. I reached out to the mayor's office and Christine, and they're going to get back to me with some dates and times.
Okay. Uh, PTO, PTA liaison reports. Franklin School?
Franklin School put their PTO meeting off until next week, but they are currently in the middle of their, um, ride with the school bus for the... I can't think of the name of the movie. Polar Express. Thank you. It looked really cute.
Oh, cool. Uh, okay. Smith School, Mr. Akamondo, do you have anything?
Unfortunately, I do not have anything for tonight. Oh. I do not have anything for tonight, but I'm sure they want to wish everyone a happy holiday.